Good evening and welcome to the continuation of the work session of the Tiger Towelton School Board. We are convening under O R S three, three, two dot zero, three, zero vacancy in Office of the Director and Board Policy B B E. For this process, we'll be giving each candidate fifteen minutes and we will have this timer up here. So when it is your turn, we'll do a couple of things once the first person's up here. But that timer will be there for your reference. And so I will now invite Danielle Byer up to the table up there. Oh, and I, I didn't actually get Wilson, so we will begin this work session at six oh three P M. Good evening, welcome. So before we begin, will you just state your name, zip code, and then confirm for the record that you are a qualified elector of the district?
Oh, there we go. Okay, Danielle Byer, my zip code is nine, seven, two, two, three, and I am a qualified elector for the district.
Perfect, thank you so much. Vice Chair Heimis.
Okay, thank you so much. Can you please share how you have been involved in school district work such as P S O, the Strategic Plan Committees, or anything else?
Sure. This year I've participated in the integrated planning meetings. In twenty twenty, I participated in the Student Success Act Oversight Committee meetings. My child is now in fourth grade and since kindergarten, my husband and I have volunteered in his classroom. I've volunteered with the backpack program when it still existed. The, I've also participated in various volunteering activities with the P S O at C F T. And participated in both sped and tag district affinity groups. And I applied for the district's Equity Advisory Committee as the parent of a twice exceptional student.
Wonderful, thank you. So what does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
For me, equity means that every student comes from a different starting point with whatever biases or advantages or setbacks that means. It means meeting each student where they're at and providing the resources needed to meet their specific needs and overcome barriers to meet academic and social emotional goals to ensure a successful outcome for each student. Personally, my husband and I have volunteered in our child's class to provide extra support so that our teacher who had over twenty eight students in her classroom could provide differentiated learning. We volunteered creating small math groups so that she could spend time with students who had different needs. As a district, for me, it means that our resources, our funding, our teachers, our staff are not spread equally, but they're spread equitably to support the students and families as they need it.
What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of T T S D?
On your website, the board theory of action is to develop an inclusive strategic planning process that clarifies the district's equity focused mission and vision that will result in significantly improved academic outcomes for all students. Focusing on the improved academic outcomes for all students. Having participated in meetings this year, I, I know that we've got a lot of opportunity there. Our fall chronic absence in both middle and elementary schools is about thirty percent this year. Our E L A benchmarks for elementary and middle school are forty percent and lower. Our math benchmarks are eighteen percent for elementary and twenty four percent for middle school. There's a lot of opportunity there. The board's oversight of policy curriculum finances should take into account that goal for improved academic outcomes for students. In addition, the board is responsible for safe environments that promote learning. Being a sounding board for the community, our schools, our families, our teachers and our staff, and ensuring that extracurricular activities are available for our students, support for our students with special needs, our tag students, allowing for differentiated learning, supporting our school counselors who do so much for our families and are really a safety net for so many of our T T S D families. Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves? So I believe that the school board serves our community. First and foremost, our priority is the students, but those students are going to rise through the district and turn into community members. They need to be prepared to be responsible members of our community as adults. We also serve our district's family members. The decisions that the board makes impacts our families. If it's longer school days, shorter school days, after school programs, the equitable offering of those for our families is so important. Our teachers and our staff are members of our community as well, and our teachers have been working all year without a contract. I, I think I heard we were there, but they've been working all year without a contract. We need to make sure that they are taken care of.
Thank you. What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
So I think our biggest challenge is funding. Our resources can only stretch so far, and there are uncountable asks for increased programming. Through the integrated planning meetings, I know that there are areas of focus which have yet to be addressed. Chronic absenteeism, behavioral challenges, general mediocre scores on the climate surveys, but limited funds to allocate for these programs. The impact from the last few years to our teachers' morale is also immeasurable. We need funding to support our teachers through professional development, competitive compensation, and appropriate levels of staff in the classroom. But our teachers are, our teachers and our staff are also our greatest opportunity. Progress has been made on a contract. It goes a long way in boosting morale. Our teachers and staff are the frontline and impact our students' lives on a daily basis. Supporting them, giving them the tools that they need to support our students is our greatest opportunity.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And so just, and you'll get more information before the meeting, but we will do the nomination and appointment process at the February sixth regular board meeting.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Yep.
All right, and as you heard, we do have the timer over here that you can reference. And then before we begin, if you can just state your name, zip code, and then confirm for the record that you are a qualified elector of the district.
Yes, my name is Mary Dirksen and my zip code is nine, seven, oh, six, two, and I am a qualified elector of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you please share how you have been involved in school or district work such as with the P S Os, Strategic Plan, other committees, et cetera?
Yeah, so I have an interesting perspective because I have one child in the fourth grade in a private school in the district and another child that's in the seventh grade in a public school in the district. And so for the past two and a half years, I've had one of the most coveted volunteer jobs at a private school, which is the morning car line. Just kidding, it's not that coveted. I've also been on the parent advisory team for my son's private school in the district. And I've also helped with various driving for student build activities and for teachers appreciation. At my daughter's public school that she attends, I've worked with teachers last year and this year on an I E P for her. We have adopted her from the foster care system, and so since she's been with us, the start of last year's school year, it's been, there's not been as many opportunities because of COVID, so.
Thank you. So what does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position specifically as it relates to the statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
So both of our children have been adopted from the foster care system. And my husband and I chose to adopt because we've found kids who are in the foster care system are the most vulnerable and unrepresented in our society with a really great diversity of backgrounds. And our daughter's ethnicity, she's of Asian descent, and we want her to have the most thoughtful engagement possible as a student at T T S D. I'm also on Oregon's Anti-Human Trafficking Advisory Committee. And fighting human trafficking has been a longstanding goal of mine that's really important to me. And that also, I believe, shows my commitment to equity. And there's also a link to kids in the foster system being at a higher risk for being trafficked. And so I also believe that equity should be applied thoughtfully so that the outcome doesn't cause unintended consequences. And I wanted to share an example of what I mean by that. Prior to living with us, our daughter was in a different state and she was, had an I E P in that state. And when she came to live with us at the start of last year's school year, that was her very first, she was in the sixth grade, new state, new middle school. We worked with the middle school learning specialist and her teachers there to try it and devise an I E P that, that worked best for her. And during that process, I thought that one of the things that caused her the most distress was math. It's also not my favorite subject, but it caused her a lot of distress and some behavioral things that happened. And so I was thinking that a calculator could be part of her I E P. And her math teacher was actually very respectful and explained that that ultimately would not actually help her be in her best interest in the long run. So I was only looking at it from the perspective of seeing how much stress math caused her and the behaviors that happened as a result of her frustration. But her teacher was looking at that from long-term learning and knowledge for her. And I really appreciated the teacher pushing back. And I believe if my request had been implemented, it would have caused unintentional negative consequences for her learning. So now in hindsight, I see that that really was the best decision. And she's learning math concepts and her behavior is improved and changed. And so I believe that equity requires a humble attitude and an attitude that we're all learning. We don't have all the answers, and we should strive to listen to others and hear what people with different thoughts have to share. And so that's how we learn, and that's why I share that example, because I learned from listening to the teacher. And her approach was really the best solution for my daughter, and, and that's come to fruition this year.
Thank you. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of T T S D?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, too. I think the role of the school board is multifaceted. It can involve creating a vision for schools in the district and helping with curriculum, overseeing that, overseeing school officials and administrators, and negotiating contracts for teachers, which I've worked in a public setting. And I know that's a challenging process for both sides. Setting the school calendar for the district, deciding on school closures, and determining policy, budget, and leadership of the school district. Oregon Reby Statute three, three, two point oh, seven, five really does outline what the powers of the school board are in Oregon. And the specifics outlined in statute is, is what's supposed to be followed. And that includes setting standards for performance of schools and superintendents, implementing policy for the district, identifying performance markers for student achievement, making sure school procedures comply with federal and state law, handling complaints, and engaging with staff, students, and parents in the community. That's a long list of stuff.
Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves?
Yeah, so again, Oregon Reby Statute three, three, two point oh, seven, two. What that says is that the school board is responsible for educating children residing in the district. And so really serving children's educational needs is the foundation really to what the school board does. But there's so many other people that are affected by school board decisions. The, the community is affected by policy decisions, by the outcomes of, of things decided on by the board. The teachers are absolutely impacted by contract negotiations. And so the school board serves these groups as well with the foundation being educating the kids.
What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Yeah, that's another really good question, and I think it depends on the filter that you're viewing this from. I think budget's always an issue in the public school system. There's a limited supply of money and an ever increasing demand for more services. So it's hard to make decisions that make everybody happy. And so I think there's unrealistic expectations about all the things that people want schools to do and then the diverging opinions on how to accomplish this. That's really challenging. I think if you were asked teachers, some would say that they're challenged with some of the behaviors that are occurring in the classroom and their limited ability to be able to do anything about it. I think mental health in our schools is becoming something incredibly challenging that requires thoughtful engagement from all parties. That includes teachers, parents, caregivers, professionals in mental, in mental health, and the community. And teachers are also challenged with too large of a classroom and not enough one-on-one time students and just not enough time to accomplish all that's expected or required of them in the day. And so they're burnt out and some are looking for other career fields. And so I think it challenges how to retain teachers in this increasingly, this, the complex world of education that's out there. I think if you were to ask students, there'd be, you know, they'd have concerns with social media posts, which are, you know, tough to control and that cause disruptions and behavioral issues of fellow classmates that they don't see changes. And I know that's something my daughter shares, you know, quite a bit that, that she sees. I think if you were to ask parents in the community, they would say that they want to have a voice at the table with decisions that impact their children and the right to know what's happening at school and in the classroom. I think many parents are concerned that the school closures during COVID caused their kids to get behind academically. That was part of our daughter's challenge and something she brought up quite a bit is that she didn't really, when she was at home with COVID, she didn't have, she didn't really learn math. And so when she was asked in the sixth grade to review principles from the fourth and fifth grade math, she was really, that was really challenging for her, and she kept bringing that up. So that's another challenge. I think if you were to ask some taxpayers, community members, and voters, they would want to know what's being taught as allowing the kids in their community to be competitive in the world market, provide themselves problem solving skills, and to really be a positive and productive member of society. I think opportunities include modeling what healthy conflict resolution can look like in the community. There are at times emotionally charged situations that happen at, at school board meetings and at school. But I think if there's a desire to truly listen with understanding and model for students that productive conflict resolution is possible, that'd be good for everybody. And I think an opportunity for the school board is to work collaboratively with the community that they serve. There's really great training out there, like crucial conversations, positive intelligence. That's, you know, teachers, staff members, board members, other interested parties could, you know, create better solutions and conflict resolution skills for the kids. But also be really beneficial. And so I think those are some of the challenges and opportunities that I, we, we could go on for a long time.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate you coming to see again at the February sixth meeting is when we will be having the nomination and appointment process.
Perfect, thank you so much.
All right, welcome back to this work session of the Tiger Towelton School Board. We will now welcome Karen Emerson. And as you probably heard from the last person, before we begin, will you just state your name, zip code, and then confirm that you are a qualified elector of the district?
Hi, my name is Karen Emerson. My zip code is nine, seven, two, two, three, and I am a qualified elector in the district.
Sorry, couldn't find my unmute button here. Can you please share how you have been involved in school district work such as P S O, Strategic Plan Committees, et cetera?
Sure. My almost full-time volunteer work in the district started with Mary Woodward P S O. Over six years, I filled almost every role in that organization as well as volunteering in the classrooms. Over four years at Fowler, I filled almost every role of that P S O. I volunteered to organize P S O staff appreciation at Tiger High School. I was a board member of the Foundation for Tiger Towelton Schools and helped organize the Tea Up for Schools Golf Tournament for eight years. I served on the Strategic Plan Committee in twenty sixteen, which created the prior plan. I served on the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee in twenty fifteen, which made the recommendations for the twenty sixteen bond. And then I was part of the district's PAC to work the campaign to get it passed by the voters. I was part of the same PAC that worked the twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen levy campaigns, and I am still the treasurer of the organization. I served a term as a T T S D School Board Member from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one. And last school year, I was part of Tiger High's Eesh Committee.
Thank you. So what does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
For me to have a commitment to equity, it means that I'm following policy A C C, Educational Equity and Racial Justice. It means I'm doing the same introspection that I expect the staff and students to be doing. It means I would be listening and hearing staff and student experiences. It means creating a budget that addresses opportunity gaps, creates ways to help make our staff and students have a sense of belonging, and provides time for staff for both data review and P D in culturally responsive practices and cultural competency. I have demonstrated this commitment by being on the board, the Developed Policy A C C, along with the All Students Belong Policy, the Bias Incidence and Hate Speech Policy, and the accompanying Oversight Committee Creation and Selection Policy. I participated in the district's Equity Coordinator Meetings where I was able to peel back some of my own onion layers on my equity journey. I participated in culturally responsive school leadership P D while on the board, with the board, and have continued working on my own cultural competency. My church is working on creating an after-school program for the students who live around our church, and we are engaging in our cultural competency work there as well. If selected to serve on the board, I would expect to be part of listening sessions to hear student and staff experiences from this year. And since it is budget season, I would expect to be making sure that the budget has investments that follow policy ACC. I would expect to be doing the work that I just described in the meaning of my equity commitment.
What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of TTSD?
The role of the board is governance. The board creates policies, develops a strategic plan, approves a curriculum, and then sets goals for the year. After providing this direction to the superintendent, the board expects the superintendent and the cabinet to lead the district to do what is integral to achieve the goals. The board spends many hours learning as much as possible about what is working and what isn't, so that it can prioritize funds in the annual budget to fill the needs and meet those goals.
Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves?
The students. The board hears input from parents, local businesses, and community members. And the district is one of the largest employers in the area with hundreds of talented educators. But all of the board's work is in support of the district's mission to educate every student.
What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
The major challenges continue to be funding, staffing, and COVID recovery. The state still has not figured out how to stabilize the state school fund or to fund it at the required level. The state is not producing enough educators who will stay in the profession for longer than three years. And the district's support roles like SPED IAs and the custodial positions remain unfilled. Recovering from the impact of COVID on our students, both socially, emotionally, and academically, is an ongoing challenge as we try to catch them up on their learning that wasn't possible during the pandemic. I believe there is one new opportunity right now for the district. The state's voters passed the Right to Healthcare Amendment, and the language stated that funding this new obligation could not take funds away from public schools. I believe that the only way the legislature can demonstrate achieving this new funding mandate is if public schools are finally funded at the QAM level. Could we coordinate all of our advocacy partners to demand that funding finally be figured out after 32 years?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here, and we will again have our nomination and appointment process at the February 6 meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are good to go with our next candidate if they are ready. So Ursula, come on down. We're gonna do a little swap. Yeah.
Good evening.
All right, and so Ursula, before you begin, will you just state your name, zip code, and then confirm for the record that you are a qualified elector of the district?
My name is Ursula Kuhn. I am a qualified candidate as listed under the ORSs that are applicable and the board policy on the table. My zip code is 97062.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Can you please share how you have been involved in the school district work such as PSO, strategic plan, committees, or anything else?
I am a city planning commissioner. I've been doing that since 2019. I work with city staff and stakeholders and citizens to recommend actions considering all information to the city council. I am a city library volunteer as well as a supporter of the teen library program, the COVID projects that were able to be done with pickups and the vestibules and other activities in the makerspace and community classes. I'm a city volunteer for activities from green space revisions to park cleanups to doing a people count on the Riverway Trail, just to name a few. I have only moved to the TTSD district in the last three years and had had previous experience in neighboring districts with both Candy and Wilsonville Westland. Clearly, COVID made a hiccup in much of that, so having experienced the variety of ways that TTSD went out of their way to be thoughtful about their students and staff was enlightening to watch. I've been involved in other projects in other districts, for instance, the school gardens in Wilsonville as a master gardener resource, in the Candy School District as a master recycler resource for changes that they made, for instance, to the milk dispensers that modified and reduced the amount of waste, their associated costs that had the benefit to simultaneously teach and encourage the students to have more awareness and confidence in their ability to contribute to their communities and their own lives. I have a student who was part of the first cohort of the TWE program that began in Wilsonville as a kindergartner, then moved to the elementary school in Candy and is now in this district's high school, that being one of the reasons that we moved into Tuolleton.
Thank you so much. What does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position, specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable and educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
From my experiences, even a long time ago, that's what we're gonna say. Even something as small as being welcome to try out for a sports team or participate in an after-school activity creates equality. However, barriers even a very long time ago existed to be able to be participating. We have provided equality, or sorry, equity here in the district by things that facilitate that, like transportation after that activity or the pay-to-play fees that we're currently able to support with organizations like the Packbackers make it so that students who may not have had the opportunity before are able to participate. COVID, of course, I'll highlight that although all students were offered an equal option to learn from home, the district worked to spread equality for the students who may have been homeless, younger learners whose parents weren't able to stay home with them, people who needed the social and academic resources to continue learning, students whose languages as a primary are not English. The district taking thoughtful and meaningful steps to intervene, for instance, when they gave us a hotspot for not having the internet, it was really helpful, providing the paperwork books that we picked up at the schools because you don't have a printer at home or other supplies that work toward being able to make all students able to participate as best as they could. And the district has been, as far as I've seen, especially with my high schooler, taking some purposeful time, like the pack time in the morning that lets the students connect and have a brief start to their day before just jumping right in at 8:30 in the morning to a lot of talking, a lot of working, and not a lot of transition from "I just got out of bed" to "I'm gonna go to work." Even us adults don't generally do that. We take a ride into work, and we're thinking about what we gotta do for the day.
Thank you. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of TTSD?
I think that the school board should be working to create an inclusive and listening forum to consider feedback from staff, students, stakeholders, and other parties on the variety of policy revisions that they are in charge of. Those revisions could be budgeting, as was previously mentioned, curriculum changes that were sent out to parents to review when the students got new science programs, or I believe they also changed some of the younger curriculum. I wasn't involved in that. It's important that the board recognizes areas that may have been infeasible or ineffective that they had put into place and to acknowledge those shortfalls and work to resolve them as best as you can in your authority.
Okay. Who do you believe the school district ultimately serves?
The community at large. This includes staff, students, volunteers, people who come into town to work, to spend money, or to be part of employment. You may or may not have children in this district, but the children that we have in this district are going to become part of this community and others. The ability for the students not only to get academic education with a variety of subjects that they can try on for size, like the wheel classes, makes it so that these students can become part of a community without having to spend an entire term that it turns out doing something they don't enjoy. While we create connections, the school community as part of the greater area hopefully also encourages these children to become long-term residents of the city or nearby areas and become future leaders in the school district.
What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Wow, that was brief. I think that some of the challenges in the district are being able to balance interest between the school population's diversity, their needs, and their interests to also be able to include as best we're able in the city and surrounding community. The local groups, including Somos Tuolleton, the Schoolhouse Pantry, or the Backpack Buddies that provides food for students who are not able to have it at home, are just a few that come to mind when considering options that are feasible. Opportunities for connections, for instance, with the high school's woodshop and the construction that goes to the local employers creates a pathway for transition for students who might not be intending to pursue higher academics following graduation. The recently started healthcare program is dear to my heart. Having gained my CNA previously at a public area like PCC and doing work in my current position at OHSU, where we also, as part of our jobs, assist students to create, I apologize, to create mentorships and connections to link those new graduates with the real-life experience of what exactly really happens at the job you think you want. That's similar to the CASE program in Oregon City. Not sure if you're familiar. That's already proven to have a successful graduation rate and a percentage of students who can begin to immediately contribute to their communities after school. The auto shop in Tigard has the same pathway. The one-to-one student iPad or Chromebooks that had been funded by the public bonds and supported by the staff made an invaluable contribution to the kids being able to have equality, and especially because they trained the kids and provided assistance to be able to do it. Trying to get a third grader to use an iPad, I thought would be more difficult than it is, but it pointed out some differences where they don't actually learn how to really type, and they don't know what a file explorer is to go find something. So being able to make those transitions and provide that global view gives them a better view, again, of big-picture thinking.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And as you heard previously, we will be doing our nomination and appointment process at the February 6 meeting. Much appreciated. Thank you so much. And we're gonna take a five-minute recess just to write down some notes, and we'll be back shortly. And we're gonna take a five-minute recess just to write down some notes, and we'll be back shortly. All right. Well, welcome back to the another continuation of our work session of the TTSD School Board. We would love to have Samma come join us.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hello. So a couple of things before we start, we do, and I'm sure you've seen, we have the timer over here, so you can just keep track of that. And then before you start, just tell us your name, your zip code, and then just confirm that you're a qualified elector of the district.
Hi, everyone. My name is Samma John. My zip code is nine seven two two four. And yes, I am a qualified member of the school district.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you please share how you have been involved in the school or district work? including not limited to the P S O, strategic plan, other committees, et cetera?
Okay, um, oh, well, one way I've been involved in the school district is I was a student here, actually, all twelve years. And I was also a student rep for the school board my senior year. And I had the great opportunity to not only represent my school, but my fellow classmates. I got the, I got to update the school board and the community on stuff that was happening in my school, upcoming events, past events. And another way I was also involved in the community, I worked for Super Fresh Youth Farm, which is a program within the school district that helped, um, that that helps students get the opportunity to experience what the work life was and to work in agriculture. We got to plant and grow vegetables, fruits, and some herbs. And then after that, we were able to serve, give out the stuff we grew to the community. And also, we used it for stuff we did in the school. Like if we had cooking class, cooking classes, we would also do that. And if we had like big feast events, we would also use that.
Very cool. Thank you. This is kind of a long question. What does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position, specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
For me, what it means to have a have a commitment to equity is for everybody to be treated equally and fairly. And just to serve those who are underserved. And I work, sorry, just one more. And how I would demonstrate this commitment is work with students who are underserved. I can open up, open them up to new opportunities or resources within the community. Have them get out of their comfort zone, let them know that they're, that we are there for them, and that we can serve not only just, not only just them, but other students just like them. Um, how I can show this is just by using myself as an example. I am a student of color. I had to overcome a lot of obstacles growing up. And I just like showing them like where I am now.
Thank you. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of T T S D?
I believe that their role is that every student is being served academically with equal services. Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves? I believe that they serve their students and their families.
All right. And what do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Some opportunities that they have is their resources and the people they're partnered with. Some of the resources I think that are great that they have is Packed with Pride, the Carrying Closet, the Virginia Garcia Health Center. And some of the other opportunities or like the people that they're partnered with that I think are great for the school district is ERCO Latino Network and the REAP Program. And also McKinney Bento. And then some of the challenges I have or the district has is everyone always seems to like fall through the cracks. And I think that those are the ones that we should focus on, the people that we are missing or overlooking. So I think just serving everyone equally and making sure that we're not missing anybody.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. That is, those are the questions. And then you may have heard this before, if you were in here, but we will be doing our nomination and appointment process at the regular board meeting on February sixth. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
And we will take a quick recess before our next candidate. All right. Welcome back to this work session for the Tiger Twelton School Board. And we are just going to keep rolling through these interviews. So Wendy McDonald, if you'd like to come on down. All right. And just to remind you, we do have a timer over here, so you can keep track of your time. And then before we begin, if you would just state your name, zip code, and please confirm for the record that you are a qualified elector of the district.
My name is Wendy McDonald. My zip code is nine seven two two four. And yes, I do qualify. Thank you. Thank you for having me here this evening.
Perfect. Thank you for being here. Can you please share how you have been involved in the school or district work, such as with P S Os, the strategic plan, or any other committees that you've been involved with?
Um, I believe that Patty, your executive assistant, has provided you with my resume this evening. So I'd like to take a moment just to review that. Hopefully, you received that electronically. First of all, in nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-nine, I was the volunteer art literacy school coordinator here at Templeton Elementary. So this is kind of a blast from the past to come here this evening. Without mentioning prior to that, I'm a resident of Tiger for thirty-seven years. And when my eldest first entered the school was over at Durham Elementary. So I began as a volunteer there until I moved into the Templeton area. Following that, I began as a district art literacy school coordinator. So I did that from two thousand to two thousand nineteen. And in addition, the Tiger Twelton Schools Foundation decided to do some garden tours. And with that, they wanted to combine Garden Art Show. So they asked me if I could spearhead that. So I did that for two years. And hopefully, of course, we raised funds and that went to the foundation and so on and so forth. You can see a lot of volunteer work listed, and I think I'll elaborate on that when you, you know, move further into the questions. But and now, of course, I started a business known as Positive Living Solutions. I was owner and operator from two thousand eleven to two thousand fifteen. And until the Department of Human Services absorbed that. And now I remain a provider to people with responsibilities for person-centered services for people with special needs. And pretty much began that from two thousand fifteen. Currently, now I'm still doing that. So kind of gives you a little outline of what I've done. So I'm back in the saddle again.
Wonderful. Thank you. So what does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position, specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
Thank you. Just making sure we provide positive educational opportunities and experiences with equitable allocation of resources. Specifically, helping marginalized students overcome barriers, some of whom are E L L students or have socioeconomic and cultural barriers. Providing them with the necessary resources and opportunities to be successful. A few examples might be what I learned recently from Dr. Riki is it could be as simple as providing an alarm clock to make sure that they attend school. Also, providing, of course, nutritious meals, breakfast and lunches, so that they are ready to go and their stomachs aren't growling and ready to receive the instructions in the classrooms. Of course, also, also by providing additional mentoring or instructional time, just to name a few. So I think those things are really important. In summary, it's important to create an all-inclusive, safe educational environment that honors and respects the diversity of our students while empowering, validating, and giving each and every student a voice. And I think I pretty much practice that now in my business, and I certainly practiced that as a volunteer for many, many years. Now, your other question was, how have I demonstrated a commitment to equity? I could give you a few. So tell me if I'm saying too much. I participated in the Lunch Buddy program that mentors students one-on-one. I mentored a Hispanic student. I've donated to area food pantries. And as a scout leader, I participated in canned food drives with my scouts, which even offered families complete holiday meals. I've been a smart volunteer, helping students improve their reading skills and abilities. As a parent volunteer, I have assisted and supported all students in the classroom, regardless of race, cultural, or socioeconomic background. In my current work, I provide, as I stated previously, person-centered services. I continually encourage and support individuals with special needs who are often marginalized. I've worked with a diverse group, which consists of Jewish, Christian, Black, and Indian. And in my work with art literacy, I've always strived to make sure that each school had a quality program which reached every student, fostered a love for learning and a greater understanding and respect for diversity. I don't know how you're familiar with our literacy program, but it's wonderful. And we brought about, and I'm proud to say that I've watched that program blossom. I had certain expectations when I entered the district. And I think that if you ever look for recommendations, I'm sure Susan Stark Hayden, who was the community relations director at the time, watched me very closely in what I did and how it grew. So I'm really proud of that. That was my baby. And in fact, you know, when I was here at Templeton, the current principal, Susan Nancy Longinger, although I even had Sue Halbach as another principal. But one day Nancy Longinger came up to me and asked me if I would be P S O president. And I was putting up the bulletin board for art literacy. And I looked at her and respectfully told her, you know, I appreciate that invitation. However, I really want to focus all my time and efforts primarily on this art literacy program. So when I came to the Templeton from Durham, art literacy here hardly existed. So but then I grew it to be twenty-five parent volunteers that So but then I grew it to be 25 parent volunteers at least. And they were producing artwork like you wouldn't believe. He was in media like you wouldn't believe. So again, it's just my pride and joy. So finally, in my personal life, I typically attend community festivals and events that celebrates and honors cultural diversity. Here post-COVID, I recently attended a Jewish festival in downtown Portland. That was a brave move on my part. And a Hispanic festival in Tiger, which was his first year. And, you know, I proudly talked to individuals while I was there. They told me who did it. I was waiting in food lines and the gal says, oh, it's my husband and so on. And so I was connecting with the community, which I think is really important, really important. And you can, if you learn a little bit more about where my program went with the art literacy, I was definitely making sure that it reached out to the community. The students, I wanted the students to not just learn in the classroom, but learn how that carried out into their community. So I had, for example, area nursing homes bring their senior citizens to this school. Coordinated that with Pam Halvick. The students made cards for them. Albertson's provided flowers for them, or not Albertson's, but the local florist here. Albertson's provided cookies for them. And the students, many of whom maybe don't get an opportunity to see their grandmas and grandpas, got to bond with the seniors in their community. So did some wonderful things. That's just one example of many. Did I answer? Okay, thank you.
Yes, you did. And you mentioned some names that I haven't heard in many, many years. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of TTSD?
Well, I would follow with what the board has already established. It's four-year terms. We govern through policy creation, curriculum adoption, financial oversight, decision-making based on the needs and value of the education community, accountability, ensuring equity, and making sure that every student receives the resources and tools to acquire a quality education. You know, I don't think I need to reinvent that.
Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves?
The students. But the students come with parents and families. And so, and it's again, I like community. So the board serves primarily the students, but also the families and members of the community, the staff, classified staff, administrators, teachers, parents, I mean, volunteers, all of the above. But primarily the students, because we know what our goals are.
Thank you. What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Well, because of COVID, unfortunately, I may mention. Teacher retention might be down. Student academic achievement may have taken a slide, learning loss due to the remote learning. Behavioral mental health has probably shot up a bit. I think I've learned or heard there's been an increase in depression. Improving communication in early learners. I also heard that as a result of wearing masks, students who are learning early on how to communicate don't get to see the face and the expressions and that, which we all like to read, right? And especially when they're young. So that's and of course, families that are financially struggling, creating greater barriers and perhaps making the achievement gap larger, especially for those who are already marginalized. So I don't like to be doom and gloom, but that's pretty much some of the facts.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And during the February 6th general board meeting is when we will be doing our nomination and appointment process.
If I may, Kristin, I don't think I got the opportunity to mention you asked the challenges. Did you want to ask?
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So it does take a village to raise a child. And we have many conscientious and hardworking professional teachers, staff members, administrators, board members, parent volunteers, and community members, all sharing one common interest and goal, to provide an equitable educational experience for every, each and every student with a positive outcome. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry about that again. And
That's all right.
Yeah. And then on February 6th, we will be doing our nomination and appointment process. Thank you so much for taking the time.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, Wendy O'Reilly. Come on down. No worries. You have the timer here so you can keep track of your time. And then we'll just, we'll start with an easy one. So your name, zip code, and then just confirming for the record that you are a qualified elector of the district.
My name's Wendy O'Reilly. My zip code is 97062, and I am a call.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can you please share how you have been involved in school or district work such as with PSO, strategic plans, or any other committees that you've been involved with?
I've been very involved in the community, not so much in the, well, it's kind of both. My son started kindergarten. And as soon as he started kindergarten, I got into the realm of coaching. I've coached soccer, baseball, that was my favorite, and basketball. So I was very involved outside the community. Inside the schools, I was on the PTA when he was in elementary school. So and I did two years as a treasurer. I, in grade school, we helped with Boy Scouts when he was in it and volunteered time at the school garden. Middle school was a little harder to volunteer at, but I did what I could. He's a junior in high school now, almost done. So I'm just looking for a new place to fit in because he's leaving. But I am very involved in the high school as well. I help out with the band as much as I can. The concession stands, pack backers, I've only done that once, but it was fun. I've been on a basketball board. Right, I'm on the basketball board for TYBA right now. I'm their treasurer. There's a theme going on. I was on the basketball, baseball board when he was in baseball. So I'm kind of out all around.
Thank you. So what does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
So treating everybody fairly has been a big priority with me. My son was actually bullied in grade school to the point of choked on the playground. And I too was bullied because I grew up in what they used to call trailer trash many, many moons ago, when that term was still obnoxiously around. So it's very important to me that everybody is treated the same regardless of where you come from, what you believe in, what your opinion is, what your values are, what your beliefs are. Everybody deserves a chance. It is very, very important to me that everybody gets the same opportunities. We need to be prepared for the future and get our kids learning and engaged in what's around them and provide safe schools. I would not be here today if it wasn't for my sixth grade teacher, who was also my eighth grade teacher, who he was there for me. And now I'm here and went to college and did all the things I wanted to do. So teachers are very important.
Thank you. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of TTSD?
Obviously, everybody quotes your guys' website. I'm not doing that. Obviously, those are the jobs. But my main thing is we need to guarantee a curriculum and education that it focuses not only on what's today, but getting the kids ready for the future, signing a contract when you're older, running your checkbook when you're older. There's a lot of opportunities for them as well as the classes themselves. I just, I want to see more kids have more of an incentive to learn and support their education so that we can provide that path and provide them for real-life experiences. Right now, I see a lot of kids who are like, oh, well, if I show up, I get a C. And we need to stop that. We need to get them motivated. We need to get them engaged. We need to get them to see their future. Like I said, if it wasn't for school, I wouldn't be here today. So it's, it's very important that the school encompasses more than just the books. Granted, that's very important. I've heard people say the same two things over and over again, students and community. It's actually a tricky question, and it's both and neither. The students become parents, become people in the community, they become our firemen or whatever they want to do. If we don't help get a path for our children, we don't have a path for the future. We don't have a path for our community. They all feed into each other. They're all part of each other. Granted, our job would be to make sure that the kids obviously come first. But in reality, those kids are who's going to take care of us when we're old. There are, there, who's going to run things when we're old? So in a life circle, it ends up being everybody. It's not just the kids. They're kids today, and who knows what tomorrow. Sorry, I'm not a speechwriter. This is all just
Thank you. What do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Everybody leads with the challenges, so I'm going to flip that. The opportunities, honestly, you're making the leaders for tomorrow. You're making the leaders for the world. That's like the biggest, most powerful opportunity that schools have. And the more you can get the kids involved in school and the community, it's just going to make their lives fuller. And we can be the path to that through clubs or classes or curricular activities or what have you. So that's my opportunity. Challenges. Everybody wants to say COVID was the reason for the downside. It's not. School has become a chore to a lot of kids. And we need to turn that around. We need to get them to not push that button that I was in school today. So I'll get my points for to, for participating. We want them to want to be there, to be engaged in that class. So we need to find a way to get the kids to look beyond, oh, there's a test next Friday. We need to get them just involved. There's a club for everybody. There's an extracurricular activity for everybody. They just got to find it. And we just need to help give them those opportunities through classes and other things to find those. I think that's a huge challenge. And the more the kids don't find those, okay, we got 94% of our kids graduating, but then what? How are they part of the community after that? We need to get them out there. And I think that's a huge challenge. And it's not just a challenge for the school system. Don't get me wrong. Parents are just as much involved in that one. Grandparents, the community, everybody's involved in that one. But I think that's a huge challenge. We need to get the school system more appealing to those parents that have the kids at homeschool. A lot of kids are being pulled out because they don't like the way the school, the parents don't like the way the school system is. We need to change that. I can't imagine going to school. I work from home every day. It sucks. I hate it. But our office isn't open. I can't imagine being a little kid doing that same thing all day in school. There is a life lesson that I learned being home from COVID that that coffee room makes in the middle of the afternoon or at 15-minute break. Those kids need that. They, the parents need the faith to get back into the schools and put their kids back in the schools. I really think that's a huge challenge. That's just me.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much. And we will be doing our appointment and nomination process during our regular board meeting on February 6th. And you'll be getting, everyone will be getting sent more information about that, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, Crystal, are you ready? Because we can recess, too. Okay, we are going to recess for a few minutes and we'll be back shortly. All right, welcome back for this final segment of our work session of the Tiger Twelton School Board. So again, if you've probably heard several times now, we do have a timer over here so you can monitor your time.
My kids are also involved in middle and high school orchestra. And I have a lot of appreciation of these activities, the role models and support that, um, that I've seen my kids experience. I also, um, previously in a, um, prior district that I resided in, helped spearhead a bilingual education program. That was in Washington State. And, um, I did a lot of work to get that program off the ground, including fundraising, um, reviewing curriculum, that kind of thing. Um, I also served, uh, on the site council at Templeton Elementary. And about involvement, I want to use this opportunity to serve the district at a higher level. And I promise I would deliver my due diligence in that role. I define due diligence at a higher level than most people do. Um, and I would work hard to use science and public input and hear student voices to deliver the best education possible for our students.
Thank you. What does it mean for you to have a commitment to equity? How have you demonstrated that commitment and how would you see yourself demonstrating it in this position specifically as it relates to this statement around centering equity from our current strategic plan? We will provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just for every student.
So I have dedicated my career to working with diverse communities to, um, improve how things work in various levels. Um, I've done a lot of work with migrant seasonal farmworkers. Um, as a health educator, also, um, with affordable housing. I've worked on, um, in rural and, um, urban Portland, um, housing communities, supporting, um, supporting the community and, um, helping to grow leaders in that, in that arena. I've also worked, um, with foster youth to, um, build programs to help support young people. Um. So I've done a lot of that work in my career. As far as regarding the school district, this is both a simple question and a complicated question. As a mixed race person who is half Latina and half white, I see the world through a complicated lens. But it's also simple in that our kids, all of them, can achieve at a high level. Some kids show up with less support and more challenges, but as a district, we must support all students and provide what each child needs to reach their potential. This includes a rigorous curriculum. Kids need a curriculum that is world-class. Families with fewer resources cannot hire a private tutor. This is their one chance, their one opportunity, and we must deliver. Some people think budgets are boring, but this role is an opportunity to carefully steward resources to best serve our student, meet them where they are, and support them to reach their full potential. Always do the research, consider best impact. And the environment matters. We have a good curriculum, teachers that, um, work hard, but the school environment matters. Um, our curriculum should instill belonging for everyone. Um. And there's also many other things to consider. What is the default that we use? What food is served as the default? What books do we read? What activities do we support? And what does that communicate? A final thought on equity is that sometimes our vision can be limited by our experiences and our fears about what people think or who might complain. But I want to carefully consider the input and vision of our students. Sometimes they can shame us. They figure out how things should be, and we just need to have the integrity to put their needs first.
Thank you. What do you believe the role of the school board is in supporting the public education of the students of TTSD?
Thank you. Um. The school board has several roles. The first one, or one of them, is working with a superintendent and not interfering with personnel or daily operation. Um, not misusing the position. The next part is about vision and goals. Um, my education includes a master's degree in public administration with a focus on policy and evaluation. I have extensive experience with nonprofits and in the public and private sector, for that matter. Um. My leadership style is future-oriented, strategic, and all about visioning. I have a can-do attitude. We can do it, and we have the responsibility to do it. Um, policy setting is another important aspect of, um, a school board member's role. Policy settings should include input from the community, parents, and students. What the best practices science and evidence shows is the best approach and uses creativity and problem solving to reach goals. A little bit more about vision. Um. Vision, creating a vision for success includes having, or my vision for success includes having an evidence-based proven curriculum. There's a lot of research about what works best for various topics, and we have a lot of expertise in our staff and experts. And it's important to review all that and make sure to do the right choice that's informed. Another thing is expectations for excellence for every student, rega- regardless of what their future goals are. That might vary, but they can all be successful. People work hard to educate our most important resource, our students, and we need to support and retain our staff and educators and appreciate all staff. All the staff work is important and is valuable. Another thing about a vision for success is to have a supportive environment that develops our young people, character, integrity, politeness, consideration for all. This means respect for everyone and treating others as they want to be treated. Yes, we can do it. We have been through a lot as a community, and it is the rainy day we've been waiting for. It's a great time to rally our resources, meet our kids where they are, and let and lead, help lead them to where they want to be. More about policy and decision-making, um, because the question didn't include what would the policies be. Um, I think this is more of a process. So as they should be, parents and community members want the very best for our students. When people care, they have passion. Um, I have thought a lot about where I would stand on the many issues facing our diverse and dynamic school district. A few things would guide my decision-making. As I've mentioned, due diligence and evidence, hard work. Listening to the solutions that people propose and the problems and concerns they are trying to solve and finding common ground when we can. The next thing is to seek out multiple perspectives, community, parents, and what teachers have to say. The last thing, again, pay attention to the most important thing, our students and what is best for them.
Who do you believe the school board ultimately serves?
Thank you. Um, ultimately, the school board serves kids as individual human beings worthy of respect, understanding, and dignity, whose voices should be heard as they challenge us to see their vision, acknowledging them and their potential. Students also are worthy of an education that prepares them for success. That includes a rigorous curriculum, supported teachers, and any additional supports needed for each child, including partnerships with community organizations. Students should have an education that prepares them to fully participate in society. This includes the ability to understand and participate in democracy and our public institutions, to have socio-emotional skills that are important to life, the ability to navigate stress and have resilience in the face of difficulty, things like growth mindset, preparation to interact with our diverse and dynamic society and whatever our future holds. Second thing, serving our kids serves our families. The third thing, serving our families serves our community. These investments make us stronger.
Right. All right. Uh, what do you see as the district's major challenges and opportunities?
Well, where to begin on that, right? So obviously, we've had a lot of COVID-associated challenges and societal problems. It's been a tough few years. This includes academic losses and delays. Students have missed instructional time. Students were less engaged. Attendance matters, so the shutdown naturally had an effect. We have the opportunity to rise to meet this historic challenge. After-school activities, including opportunities to catch up academically, summer school, use of any downtime very carefully. How do teachers catch up what was missed while moving forward? The, the kids who are where they should be. This is a historic challenge. We need to work very hard and involve our full resources and community to make up what was lost. We also have a lot of socio-emotional challenges. Kids might have had fun, some of them during COVID. Others had a lot of not now, I'm on a call, or a little of both. So many lost milestones, lost identity, support, activities. Um, our middle school here at Tualee only has one viola player in the eighth grade. For those of you that don't know about the orchestra, that is unusual. Let's put in the effort to have those school dances, the outdoor program, musical performances. Rejoin that soccer team. You can still play that instrument. Activity has been engaged the prefrontal cortex, learning music, et cetera, help with impulse control and help kids heal. It's important to remove barriers, but also to support the things that work. We also have larger challenges of society. In a lot of ways, a school is a microcosm of society. I think we all know society is struggling right now, but we have an opportunity to teach mutual respect and acceptance. We have an opportunity to address issues with school environment, continuing to do this and keep improving and be role models that are needed. A final thing, um, is we have demographic changes happening. We have fewer students per household, but a growing community that's going to be bringing in more students to our district. I think it will be important to carefully use resources and update plans as more data comes in. And I think, um, I guess just a final thought about, um, it will be continuously important with all these challenges and opportunities to really utilize our resources wisely, get the best possible effect for what students need. We have a lot of challenges that have just been thrown at our community, at our school, at our students and our families, but with really careful use of our resources, I hope we can do the best possible job for our young people.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you. And I know you've heard this several times now, but we will be doing the nomination and appointment process during our regular school board meeting on February 6th.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank, um, the entire board for the opportunity to interview for this role. Thank you.
All right. And with that, we will adjourn this work session of the